In pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 71, Section 38 and, the Kingston School Committee proposes a public budget hearing as posted for February 6, 2024. Is there a motion to open this hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to address the committee in the form of a public budget hearing?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. I think we've announced that we're being recorded. Just wanted to make sure.
This, the public budget meeting is being recorded, and I will also announce that it's recorded when we go to open session.
Oh, okay. Just wanted to make sure.
All right. So no members of the public are present that wish to speak in line with the public budget hearing? Is there a motion to remain in the public budget meeting or exit?
Make a motion to exit the public budget hearing.
Second. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. We've concluded that portion of our responsibilities. All right. Now our open meeting. Let us note that it is 6:02 on February 6, 2024. Let us open, call to order the Kingston School Committee meeting with a roll call. Mrs. Cannon?
Present.
Mr. Chican?
Present.
Mrs. Coleman?
Present.
Mrs. Arietta?
Present.
And Timothy Lewis is present. And for the record, this meeting is being recorded. It's a bit redundant, but at this point, we open up to any, to hear from any visitors. Okay. All right. Second item is the approval of regular minutes for January 18, 2024.
Make a motion to approve the regular school committee member minutes, excuse me, for January 18, 2024.
Second.
Actually, can I make one change?
Yes, Megan.
I don't have them in front of me. In the section where it mentions the teacher representatives, it has Mrs. Cummings with her first and last name. It just says Viveros for Courtney Viveros.
All set? All right. Thanks, Megan. So there's a motion, a second. There's a correction made by Megan from the amendment. Okay. We'll do a roll call vote for this one. Mrs. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Chican?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman?
Yes.
Mrs. Arietta?
Yes.
And Timothy Lewis is a yes. Okay. The next item is the MSBASOI grant discussion. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Prue to speak to this and then open it up to any members of the committee for questions and comments.
Thank you. So we would like to submit a statement of interest to MSBA, the Massachusetts State Building Authority, for an accelerated repair program for Kingston Elementary roof, windows, and doors. As you know, of the two buildings, Kingston Elementary School is the older of the two. The roof is older. We think it has a better chance of being selected for the grant for that reason. And we would like to submit a statement of interest based upon an assessment that was done several years ago, but was recently redone as part of the building envelope study, which would also be submitted as part of that process. In this, we would ask that you use the language provided in your packet to, to vote that proposal this evening. And we would also ask that the Board of Selectmen consider voting in supporting this also on the, in their meeting on the February 13. So I have spoken with the town administrator to let them know that we're going to be seeking this grant again, but we need the town's approval because the town is stating their, their willingness to support the program and complete the program, provided that we get the grant funding.
Okay. Thank you. Now, so if, if this committee were to vote in favor, the town administrator is aware of already putting them on for the agenda on 2/13, correct?
Yes. I'm going to confirm with him after tonight if, in fact, you vote to approve submitting a statement of interest.
All right. Thank you. Any comments or concerns from any of the members? I know, Jean, you have some background on this from years of service.
Dr. Prue, just to clarify, this is, this would be our sixth or seventh year applying for the grant?
Yes.
Every year, they've pushed the metric around what we qualify for. So we have not qualified for it yet, but we'll see. Just unfortunately, just, it, it depends on what and how many applicants, I believe, is how they base it. Yes. So it used to be 20 years. Now it's like 25, and then they just keep pushing, pushing it. But I know that the town can't afford to do it without the grant, so we have to apply.
Okay. So there are some variables, but at the very least, we can take a vote to support it or not support it.
Yep.
So is there a motion with regard to the MSBA grant?
And it would be a motion direct from this language?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
Do either of you want to read it, or would you like me to read it off this?
I can make a motion. Having convened in an open meeting on February 6, 2024, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the School Committee of Kingston, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts Building Authority a statement of interest form dated February 28, 2024, for the Kingston Elementary School located at 150 Main Street, Kingston, Massachusetts, 02364, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts Building, School Building Authority in the future replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility, description of the deficiency described therein for each priority. The existing roof is 27 years old, and it's past its life expectancy, which is 20 to 25 years. The roof has numerous leaks, but is in good enough condition that a full restoration is recommended versus a full rip and replace. The windows, doors, and storefront sections are 24 years old and are in need of replacement due to operational issues. They have, they all have sealant and gaskets that have failed along with damaged or missing screens. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority or commits the School Committee of Kingston filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second.
All right. Thank you, Jean. Thank you, Megan.
Sorry.
We're going to do a roll call vote on this. Infermentive, a yes vote is supportive of this. Megan Cannon?
Yes.
Michael Chican?
Yes.
Jean Coleman?
Yes.
Tricia Arietta?
Yes.
Tim Lewis is a yes.
Thank you.
All right. Now, thank you. All right. The next agenda item is Silver Lake Cheer Flyer and Possible Vote. This falls under our purview. If anyone would like to comment or make a possible motion, you have the floor.
Just a comment. I believe this is something that we do not have to approve since it falls under the Silver Lake. But this particular program does go in front of the other three committees, so I think as a formality, we should go ahead and issue an approval in a similar way.
Okay. Thank you for that. So open to a motion?
I'll make a motion to include the, or to approve the cheer flyer, Silver Lake Youth Cheer Flyer, to be included and distributed by the Kingston Elementary and Intermediate Schools.
Second.
All right.
Everybody.
It's a jump.
Both, right?
Yeah. All right. So a roll call vote on that. Mrs. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Chican?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman?
Yes.
Mrs. Arietta?
Yes.
And Timothy Lewis, a yes. Thank you. All right. Teacher's Corner. I think we have two of our finest here. Welcome to the podium. Welcome to Mrs. Kane and our fabulous reading teacher at KES. Go ahead.
So KIS has been busy in January. We had our door decorating contest sponsored by the Student Council. The theme was favorites. Different classes chose hobbies, favorite foods, favorite activities. The bookmark contest was organized by our librarian, Mrs. Curtin. The second annual student versus teachers basketball game has been set for March, and tickets will be sold soon. Students are excited about our new program with the Eagle Box and visiting the school store. We're all hoping for, well, not all of us, but some of our kids are hoping for a little bit of snow so they can get back outside doing the cross-country skiing during their PE time. But in the meantime, they've started gymnastics, which is a favorite activity. Our chorus groups are up and running and ready to, practicing for their spring concert. The fourth grade's been enjoying their learning about Lunar New Year and Black History Month. And our access testing for our EL students was completed and when more than 70 students, 70 multilingual students were assessed over, between KES and KIS.
This is a busy time of year at KES. Hundredth Day was yesterday, so we had the kindergarten Hundred J Museum. We had the Rockathon where the first graders read and rocked, and in between, parents came in and kept the rocking chairs warm while the kids were at specialist or at lunch and recess. The second grade has begun a book bracket for Read Across America, and we'll be putting out requests for people to come in and read during the lunch in March to the first graders, bringing your favorite children's book in. So you'll all be getting an invite to that. There's a lot going on at KES. What else is going on? So they just have finished up some new art projects. So when you walk in the building, check out the art hanging on the walls. I didn't hear what's happening in FISED, but I've heard it's basketball from my students. So there's a lot happening. Chinese New Year is happening, and of course, Valentine's is a big deal at the elementary school. Busy month.
Great. Thank you for those updates. And hold on for a couple of weeks, then you get a well-deserved week off. All right. But thank you very much. Do we have any, any members of the PTO or any members of the committee who have knowledge of the PTO that would like to share any information?
They are having a meeting this evening, so it's coinciding with, with our meeting tonight, so.
And tomorrow's the last day for the cupcake, this Charlie's forms.
All right. And on the side, I did speak with the PTO president earlier this week about a possible event or fundraiser. We would play KIS Dads or Moms versus KES Dads or Moms in a hockey game. So that, keep our eyes out for that. That might be a fun new activity to be happening here in Kingston. So, all right. I'm going to turn it over to the administration for their reports.
So I don't know if Principal Whipple is able to join us on the link tonight.
She's dangerous.
Oh, she is. All right.
Oh, can you hear me?
Carrie, you're in.
Oh, wow. Okay. It, it just looks a little different right now on my screen. Good evening, everybody. Sorry, I'm talking from home tonight, but just some updates. Mrs. Levitt gave some great updates. So there's a lot going on right now. The value of the month is Karen. We had our multicultural night last month, and it was awesome. I included a visual for people to see. It was, we got a lot of good feedback. Kids had a blast, so really excited to continue that each year. Lego Day is always a great time. So the kids worked on the value of the month at the time, which was teamwork, and they all created a structure and worked together on that. As Ms. Levitt said, we had Hundredth Day of school, and first grade did the Rockathon, which was new this year. Today, we started the Safe Roots to School work, and that is all about pedestrian safety. This is something we started last year. We're working with Mass Department of Transportation, and we have somebody who comes out and trains each class for about 30 minutes. So we're excited about that. Field trips are starting to be scheduled as well. Right now, we have the first grade field trip, which they'll be going to Franklin Park Zoo on May 24. And as Ms. Levitt said, Valentine's Day is a very good deal in a pre-Ked up to building. We did send a reminder out to families regarding the homeless policy, though, and there should be no food coming in. There's a lot of upcoming dates. I won't beat through them. They were in the packet, but just, we are going to be having a kindergarten show this year, so we're excited about that. So you'll see that for April 10. And then just our typical end of the year activities coming up, such as field trips, second grade music show, Booster Van, Field Day, Pitcher Day, things like that. Does anybody have any questions?
Has kindergarten registration officially been opened yet? Just in case people ask.
It has not officially opened yet. We are working on an electronic registration, so that should be coming out soon.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Carrie. I'll turn it over to Mr. Materna, KIS.
Good evening at KIS. Ms. Kane pointed out a lot of the things that we're doing at KIS, but it is hard to believe that the Hundredth Day of the school year was yesterday. A lot of the students at KIS have enjoyed the cross-country skiing. And Grade Three students, if you're listening, you will have an opportunity, if not this year, then next year, you'll have your opportunity to engage in that. Our school store did officially open yesterday. I've been talking about this here a few times now. It's part of our SOAR program. Students have the opportunity to earn Eagle Bucks and use them to purchase things in the school store. And it was officially opened today, and I'm looking forward to some feedback from students and staff around how it went. Our Student Council did have a door decorating contest. Many classes had fun with this, captured their shared hobbies and interests. We had winning doors for each grade, and then some specialty doors, who the whole classroom won some Eagle Bucks. So again, kind of feeding into that PBIS SO, SOAR program and our initiative of building a strong culture at KIS. I was recently, got an email from DESI saying that there are students at Kingston Intermediate who will be receiving the Student Achievement Award from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. By the way of these awards, the department is honoring high-achieving, high-need students across the Commonwealth in an exciting and inclusive manner. High-need students who scored exceeds expectations or progressing in the 2023 MCAS and MCAS ALT in English, Language Arts, or Math will be receiving this award. So that's the information I have. More to come as, as it comes in to me. Students in Grade Five and Six practicing their skills for the basketball match, matchup against the staff. And that's going to be in March. And we have had some great opportunities for field trips. Upcoming field trips, Grade Five is going to the Commonwealth Museum in March. Grade Three to the Manomett Bird Sanctuary in May. And Grade Four is going to the Ducksbury Maritime School in June. Keep your eyes out for report cards. They go home electronically in March 19 with conferences to follow. That's all I have from KIS. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Materna. Next on the agenda is Ms. Hickey. Would you like to share an update?
Thank you. You have in your school committee materials the finance report for this meeting. I would like to point out that there's a deficit in the indemnification line. That's due to a change in the provider. There's a deficit in the KES substitute line. The budget for FY25 takes this into consideration. There are some deficits in various lines. The Kingston Intermediate School custodial supplies, Kingston Elementary School tech hardware, Kingston Elementary School principal supply. And those deficits are absorbed within the categories that they're in. And then there is a deficit in special education transportation, special education contracted services, and special education tuitions. I'll be working with Dr. Panarista to file for Circuit Breaker extraordinary relief this spring, so hopefully that will allow us to cover some of those costs. The FY25 budget does take into account these deficits.
Thank you for the update. Any members of the committee have any comments or questions for Ms. Hickey?
Just out of curiosity, all the deficits, how do they track, like, the total, the aggregate for the budget of this year's on, above or below what we expected?
That's a tough question for me to answer, given that I have only been here two months. And I apologize about that.
Oh, no, no. I keep hearing all the deficits, and I just was curious as far as the total. What does that look like, big picture? But we can talk about that offline also.
Are you asking how much they're going to be applying in extraordinary relief? Sounds like if we have to apply for extraordinary relief, it's, it's significant. It's probably upwards of tens of thousands?
Sorry, I'm just flipping pages on the report. For the extraordinary relief, it, it looks like we're close to, I, I didn't receive an update from the special ed bookkeeper prior to this meeting, but it looks like we're overspent about $1 million right now.
So let me, let me just process that for a second. So above and beyond what we had originally budgeted a year ago, we're over by $1 million?
At this moment, yes.
But do credits then come back into offset?
Possibly.
That?
That's the question I have. I, I have asked to meet with the special ed bookkeeper about this to see how the Circuit Breaker credits are added in to, and then to see. And again, we're hopeful about extraordinary relief.
Okay.
Yeah. So they gave the committee members some pause. So we will, this will not be the last time we talk about that. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for that update.
Mr. Lynch?
Thank you. I just had a couple of quick updates to follow along on Ms. Levitt's update about access testing. So I just wanted to say.
Ryan, I'm sorry. Microphone.
I'll start again. I just wanted to, just wanted to follow up Ms. Levitt's comments about the access testing and thank our ESL teachers who administered over 70 access tests. And access testing is required of all students who are identified as multilingual learners. And so that assessment is given annually in January and February and assesses students' progress in learning English, particularly reading, writing, speaking, and listening. And it sort of tracks their progress. And it involves a little bit of shuffling and, and running around to make sure students sort of complete the assessment. And I just want to appreciate Ms. Key and Mr. O'Neill for completing that requirement in a timely fashion. We also have with, across the state, we're seeing additional needs related to multilingual learners. And so this month, DESI has provided support through an organization called Confianza, which has provided some technical assistance in helping our, our leaders and our staff ensure that the needs of multilingual learners are met. So Mr. Galuski from KES and Ms. Farrell, the elementary curriculum coordinator, myself, and other educators from Silver Lake participated in that professional development. So we appreciate their efforts to learn and adapt and make sure that all students have access to the curriculum at both of our Kingston schools. So that's my update on curriculum instruction and assessment for Kingston.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Does anyone have any comments from Mr. Lynch? All right, doctor, you're up.
So in your packet, you have a, a meeting schedule for consideration and possible vote this evening. You'll notice the Kingston School Committee meetings.
Your mic.
In your packet this evening, you'll find a school committee meeting schedule. The Kingston School Committee meetings run similar to the schedule that we had this year. And Karen has contacted the town of Kingston to make sure that the, the room would be available for these evenings, assuming that we wanted to continue in this format for next year.
Thank you, Jill. So if you note that we will still be in this building, as Jill, as Dr. Prue pointed out, this, the Town Hall has awarded us these dates. They are Monday evenings, just via reference. And they follow really the same timeline and process as years past. But then the final meeting will be in line with all the other school committees. That will, it'll be a remote closeout. Any questions, concerns, or comments before we hear a motion?
Not directly related to this, but I did have a question today. A parent asked if we had approved the calendar. And I had said that we had, but it's not yet posted on the internet. So I just want to make sure that once we do approve these, that they get posted so that that information can be shared.
They will, but not until all four communities have approved, and then it will get posted on the, on the website. Yes.
Thank you. I will make a motion that we approve the Kingston School Committee meeting dates for the 2024, 2025 school year.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Roll call vote. Mrs. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Chican?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman?
Yes.
Mrs. Arietta?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis is a yes. All right. Thank you.
Our next item is the Kingston Budget Update. So if we could have that presentation. All right. So this evening, we are going to be working off of version two of our preliminary budget. You may recall that we, in our last meeting, we went over Slide Two, the ways that we have voted and constructed the budget in the past versus the way that we need to move forward and change the budget for FY25. Part of that is the pre-K restructure to be officially recognized through the Silver Lake Regional Agreement. And the other part is the way in which our pre-K and out-of-district tuitions were charged to the elementary schools in the past. And that is an incorrect structure that was in place for decades that needs to change. In addition, we told you that we would be meeting with the Department of Education to talk about how Circuit Breaker for this year and following years would be applied. For this year, Circuit Breaker, we can apply Circuit Breaker for pre-K all the way through 12-plus for this year. Starting in FY26, however, Kingston will not be able to claim Circuit Breaker for pre-K and secondary out-of-district, as those will be moving to the Silver Lake budget. And so that's what this next slide details, the changes and how Circuit Breaker has worked in the past and how it will work in the future. In terms of our last meeting, we went over the special education changes, which is primarily the integrated preschool becoming part of the Silver Lake budget. And out-of-district costs for grades seven through 12-plus, as well as pre-K, will be part of the Silver Lake budget, and those will be moving out of. Grade seven through 12-plus will be moving out of the Kingston budget. We had mentioned last time about the changes to the Kingston budget and the impact with the out-of-district costs being offset by the, the 240 grant, as opposed to using the 240 grant for salaries, which is how it's been traditionally used in the past. And we also mentioned last time that we needed to put the curriculum coordinator in a local budget. And since the curriculum coordinator, based upon our population size in Kingston, is over 50%, her placement in this budget makes the most sense. And then the other two towns would be, we would have an agreement with them that would need to be structured through our HR director as well as our attorney to structure that appropriately and, and ensure payments from the other two towns to support that position. We do have an administrative review meeting coming up on Thursday night prior to the Silver Lake meeting. And we also have a joint school committee meeting where we'll be talking about these shared positions and their impact to the, to the budgets, not just for Kingston, but for Silver Lake and for all of the towns.
Jean has a question, Jill?
May I just ask a question directly related to that? Because it appears that we're considering moving the curriculum coordinator position to this. Is that going to be a huge decrease? Do we know what amount that will decrease from the shared cost budget? Since we don't know what those numbers are going to be yet.
So it'll move out of, her salary amount will be removed from the shared cost, and it will be placed in Kingston. So Kingston will be increased. Shared cost will decrease by that amount. However, there are other contractual obligations that will impact the shared cost budget. And it's not just contracts, but there are other shared costs that we, we assume as a partially regionalized district.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
So Sarah's going to explain the changes she has made to this version.
So between the version one budget that was presented to you last time and this, which we're now calling the version two budget, there was an addition, there was an additional student that required an out-of-district placement, so I added one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for tuition and transportation for this student. The elementary curriculum coordinator, I had budgeted one-third of their salary to King, to each of the three towns, I have gone back and budgeted that proportionally to the Union Thirty-One proportions, and that is an additional twenty thousand three hundred sixty-eight dollars to the Kingston budget, and again, I put a note there that fifty thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars will be reimbursed by Halifax and Plimpton for the costs of that position. The FY25 circuit breaker estimate is one million dollars, I subtracted the one million dollars, so the total change from the budget that I presented last time to tonight is eight hundred and sixty-four thousand six hundred and thirty-two dollars decreased.
So we also reviewed last time that utilities were estimated at a five percent increase, the substitute line was increased and does include the building-based substitutes, the shared costs have not been finalized, as I mentioned, homeless transportation is level-funded, some resource reallocation to address priorities was addressed last time by both of our principals, there are no known retirements at this time, and the out-of-district vocational, Kingston currently has five students and programs, eight placements have been budgeted due to additional applications, but we won't know until April first what the total number of applicants is for Kingston. Version two, the circuit breaker estimate has been, the offset has been taken to reduce the budget, special, regular education reflects a nine percent increase of nine hundred forty-five thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars. Special education reflects a thirty-four percent decrease of two million forty-five thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. The total budget decrease of six percent of one, one million forty-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars. Payroll represents seventy-two percent of the regular day budget. Please keep in mind that although this is a decrease for the Kingston budget in certain areas, Silver Lake is going to be increasing, and we will not have those numbers, we don't have those numbers finalized yet in terms of the assessment and the total impact to Silver Lake.
Could you go back to that last slide, please? So on, in the nine percent increase for the regular day, I understand that seventy-two percent of that is for staffing and payroll. Does that include the proposed additional staffing at both KI and KE?
No, it includes all of the staff that was formerly Silver Lake, that has been incorporated into the Kingston budget, and it, it includes the salary for the curriculum coordinator, it includes the absorption of any revolving accounts, because those were, some salaries were paid for out of revolving accounts before, because there were tuitions being charged to different schools throughout the district to support programs, those no longer exist because Silver Lake Elementary Special Education programs don't exist.
Okay.
We will still have a pre-K revolving account because we tuition in peers for that program.
Thank you.
So I'll let Sarah explain this next chart for you.
So on this next slide, I put together a graphic, I thought it would be helpful to be able to look at this. On the left-hand side of the chart is the total amount of the FY24 budget, and I broke that up into three pieces, I broke it up into the gray portion at the top, which is tuition and transportation for out-of-district students that were part of Silver, part of Kingston's budget last year, that will be part of the Silver Lake budget next year. There, in the orange, is the circuit, the amount that Kingston used for circuit breaker, and then the blue would be all else. If you look on the right-hand side with the FY25 budget, the yellow piece at the top is the former staff and supplies and expenses for programs that were revolving programs, the orange is the circuit breaker that will be applied to the budget for FY25, and the blue represents all else. So there are approximately three million four hundred and sixty-four thousand six hundred and seventy-four dollars in out-of-district tuition and transportation moving from Kingston to Silver Lake.
Not included in this budget are the additional staffing requests that the principal shared with you last time, or potential enrollment increases, and as we know, we're about to begin kindergarten enrollment. Next slide, please. So you may recall that Principal Whipple gave you some projected class size and, uh, numbers and enrollments for next year, and she also presented the special care classroom for the, to meet the needs of several of our students and potentially even some students from out-of-district who may benefit from this program. She highlighted the fact that the cost for out-of-district placements would be more expensive than providing our own program within district, and she also mentioned her, her hope of increasing music to point for FTEs. I'll turn it over now to Principal Materna.
Thank you. You may recall last time that our, the enrollment of the district is increasing, and next year, our projected numbers at KES are going to be over six hundred and forty students. The biggest projection for next year is the incoming class of the third graders, and the class size of approximately a hundred and seventy-five projected. This is the crux of a request for a, an FTE grade three staff member. Taking into consideration the, the conversation here last time, I do want to express that there, I, I understand that there is, there is a need to support special education in KIS. That need is, is obvious to me, and with some support from Dr. Panarisi, we looked at this need and figured out what is going to best suit the needs of KIS, and I reprioritized my asks, my additional staffing. Number one on the list is a special education rules-based reading teacher, which currently we're using contracted services to meet the needs of the students within the building. The contracted services are typically more expensive services than a full-time staff member would be going through a contact agency. The second additional support is an FTE team chair. Now, this team chair would relieve a lot of responsibilities that our current special education grade-level teachers take on, as far as meetings, as far as administrative work, as far as testing. In my conversations with the grade-level staff members, the, the work that is, that revolves around creating meetings and creating IP's for students is taking them out of classrooms, and those classrooms are being supported by paraeducators. So if we looked at having a team chair that would run the meetings, it would put the special education student, teachers back into the class a lot more. Rough estimates of calculations of time spent on testing, on the meetings, they're still going to have to be in the meetings, but the rough estimate's about four, three to four hours per student for testing, for administrative paperwork, and if you're looking at a caseload of twenty-five students across the year, that's going to add up to a hundred hours that each grade-level stu, each grade-level special education teacher is not student-facing. So taking into consideration, again, the needs of the students and how we can support them specifically with special education, I do want to highlight those two additional reprioritized needs of KIS. The third, down the bottom, is the FTE grade-level teacher, that would be for third grade, to take into consideration the increase in students that are coming over from KES. I'd like to highlight here one, another change, and that change is from a specialist teacher. In version one, I wrote down a PE teacher, and I'm going to change that to a specialist teacher. My initial thought for the PE teacher was thinking about utilizing current space and current materials. Adding another specialist teacher is going to accrue, like, we're going to need more space, we're going to need more materials. But with that, I'm open for a specialist teacher, and I have some rationale behind the specialist teacher in two slides from here, which we won't go there yet. But other things that I, that I have been thinking of to support the specialist teacher are a writing lab to increase, improve writing skills for the students, it could be a creative writing lab, a STEM class to support science standards across all levels, perhaps introduce robotics to students at early ages, it would be hands-on, it would be a lot more aggressive, or not aggressive, but supporting the science needs. Or also, again, another example of an additional specialist would be another art class, potentially a three-D art class, or something else that's going to bring about the creativity of students at KIS. The point-six FTE music teacher to create a one-point-oh music teacher at KIS, that stands as a request, and then, again, you may, you remember that the increase, the two, the point-two FTE addition to the ELL time in Kingston, if Halifax, you know, based on Halifax and Plimpton. Those red parts up top are some ways that we're looking at balancing out these requests, and if you take into consideration some positions that we currently have and some resource reallocation, we're looking at a total increase for all of these requests of approximately ninety-five thousand dollars. Are there any questions here on this slide? Okay, next slide, please. So the changes and reductions in special education, these are some things that we're looking at here at KIS, is that the students with disabilities, their profiles and needs are dynamic, obviously, and that they're going to shift each year dependent upon enrollment. The limited number of students transitioning to KIS in the DLC program does not necessitate the need for a second KIS DLC, which, that's the model we have right now, currently are two DLC classrooms. There is a need for a second LBC classroom based upon incoming grade-two KES students and existing KIS students' needs. There are several inclusion DLC students transitioning from KES that require minimal pull-out services that would be serviced as pull-out, not a complete sub-separate program. And I think that's an important delineation, too, is that it's, there are inclusive needs that can be supported on a pull-out basis, but not a complete sub-separate program. Why an additional specialist?
Ms. Materna, I'm so sorry. I actually have a question on the last slide, just before you move on. I'm just wondering, what, will there be any changes made to the SLC? It's not mentioned in this slide, and I know in the last meeting. No, it's on. Sorry, can you come in? I apologize. I know in the last meeting, there was a mention of possibly not having a need for it next year, I'm just wondering if there's any update on where that classroom stands?
So we're looking at the supports that our students are going to need for next year, and as far as where that stands, we'd like to support all our students, we know that there's going to be a need for that additional LBC program, the language-based reading program. Right now, the conversation with Dr. Panarisi and myself is can we support students in a, in an SLC program, some sort of behavioral program, through a hybrid LBC program? That's going to, that would support sort of behaviors, but also support the necessary education that students are going to need for like, like their reading, their skills.
Okay, oh, yes.
Chrissy, I'll please go to the microphone, thank you.
So currently, the enrollment in our SLC, we don't have any SLC students coming over from KES. Right now, the enrollment in our SLC at KIS is totally inclusive. So that teacher will remain with the support personnel as well to keep our kids in inclusion. So we don't have a need, and we have a mandate for the least restrictive environment.
Right.
So these children don't require that. Now, that said, two years from now, we may have students with that need, but we don't right now. So we have to shift the classrooms and the focus of the classrooms to where the need is.
Sure, but the staff will remain?
The staff remains, yes, because they've done an incredible job keeping those children, you know, focusing on their studies and learning the self-regulation skills, so we don't want to disrupt that.
Awesome, thank you, appreciate that, thank you.
And to build on that, to hear of the, the success stories that, you know, our students have shown throughout the years is a testament to the support that.
I can attest to the SLC and the skill level that they are able to teach students in that program, so.
There is a need for that behavioral component, we're just not really certain where it fits yet. Yep. Sure. So the additional specialist. There are lots of reasons that I feel are necessary, and these are kind of highlighting the, the top reasons for an additional specialist. As I noted before, it could be any specialist, but what I'm trying to accomplish here is to provide consistency in structured time on learning for all students across single-grade levels, that would be supported by grade-level meeting times for further staff. Scheduling of general and special education teacher collaboration and in-classroom supports can be more consistent. Students have more support academically during common grade-level MTSS intervention blocks, which are being embedded in the proposed new schedule. I'm working out the schedule right now with my scheduling committee, and I, I hope to have something to present to, to you guys as well in, in the near future as we move forward. I would add a grade-level common planning to help increase vertical and horizontal alignment with state standards, but also the opportunities for grade-level team-driven data collection, analysis, and support for students, having the teams be able to come together and collaborate and work together. These are the, this is the rationale behind adding an additional specialist.
All right, thank you, Mr. Materna, very good presentation. Oh, you're still going?
Nope, that's all I have.
Can we go back two slides? One more. All right, I, I just want to thank you for a very, very thorough and thoughtful presentation. This gives me a great deal of positive going into, you know, our, our next few meetings that we're going to have to have some difficult discussions about budgeting, but I have a firm understanding of what you are presenting, I have a firm understanding of what you see as a building administrator for the needs of your building, and I just want to thank you for putting this thought process in, and if I could, from a, from a former team chair myself, I know what that does to a special education team, how it opens them up to really work with kids. We have a reading specialist in the room right now, I know the magic that they can produce when given the resources and the time to work with kids, so this was very thoughtful and thorough, so thank you.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you, so we still have more work to do with the budget. We're going to be presenting to Silver Lake the assessments.
Microphone.
We still have more work to do on the budget, and we will be presenting to Silver Lake on Thursday evening, so we'll have. So we'll have assessment numbers for you the next time that we meet. We, I, I believe our principals are going to be meeting with the Kingston Capital Planning Committee soon, tomorrow?
Tomorrow evening, yeah.
Though the capital plans were shared with the town earlier. And so they'll be meeting with them tomorrow. And then our, our next step is typically, you know, participating in meetings with the Finance Committee or the Board of Selectmen as needed moving forward. We typically get those invitations. But those usually don't come out, or we don't participate in them until we know what we're working with in terms of the, the total budget, which includes the assessments. So there's still more work to be done before we can give you final numbers.
I understand that, Jean?
Thank you for your presentation. I especially liked how it was broken down with what was being removed from the budget and what's being added. $95,000, just to, I guess, confirm, that did not include Carrie's requests for the .4, for KES. Okay. Sarah, do we know what the percentage requested would be, like, percent increase? Like, right now, we were looking at, I believe it was like a negative one-point-something decrease. But do we know with the current request what, what that would be? And I guess, in my head, and this is wearing two hats here, and I know Michael's in the same boat because we're on two committees. So we're seeing the negative impact of the restructuring from the Silver Lake budget. But then we're seeing the positive impact of the restructuring from the Kingston budget. And I guess in my head, I'm trying to reason, we're looking at more of, like, an apples-to-apples 8% increase for Silver Lake. But for Kingston, we're looking at a negative increase right now still. So if that's the case, then, I mean, you figure we can't be more than like a 4% increase combined.
Across the board.
Right, and that's, and that's, I'm not saying we can't be, I'm saying I don't think the numbers would make that. I'm wondering if there's some cost savings that we're not realizing when all of these budgets are redone like this? Or if, if there's something that we're not looking at, I guess is my.
I follow what you're saying.
Question. Because, again, like, and I, we just saw it in your slide, the 34% decrease in special education, which kind of aligns with the 37% increase that we saw the other day with Silver Lake. But we're seeing, I think there's some cost savings here that are being, from the budgets being combined like this. But I don't know if I can pinpoint where that is or if that's been determined yet. And I know that, Sarah, I feel bad, you've only been in this role for a couple of months and you're like in deep with, with everything going on. But I, I don't think it's as daunting as maybe it sounds like from Silver Lake perspective.
So one of the things that I am working on for Thursday night is we tend to always look at, Kingston looks at Kingston and Silver Lake looks at Silver Lake. And then Kingston looks at Kingston and Kingston's assessment. And Plimpton looks at Plimpton and Silver Lake looks at Silver Lake. And then there's the, and one of the things I'm working on for Thursday night, and I'm just going to refer to it as the overall cost of education, is a comparison of, in Kingston, the cost for the Kingston Elementary School and Kingston Intermediate School plus the assessment. And what is the change from FY24 to FY25? As well as all three towns, what's the change? Because there are so many moving pieces here, it's very difficult to say, oh, the budget went down here and it went up there and it went down here and it went up there, because we're looking in so many different places all at once. And so that's, I'm attempting to put together the big-picture, 3,000-foot view of everything for the budget so that we can really have an idea of what's happening. And I think that will answer your question?
It would, and again, like, if I wasn't wearing two hats on this committee, I, I would probably be like, okay, well, great, like, we're looking at a negative increase. Why don't we just fund all of the wish list items? And then that's not even a 3% increase, that makes sense. But then, knowing the big picture, but I, I do think that there's, hopefully in our favor, some cost savings to this whole restructuring that hasn't quite been determined yet. Because, like, seeing the numbers and seeing, there's no reason for an 8% increase. There's just not, not when, you know, the money's being moved over here or the services are being moved or, in your case, eliminated because they're being moved. So there's just so many moving pieces. And I think that would be very helpful to, to see it. And again, thank you for stepping in when you did. I, I, you've got a lot, you've got a lot going on because just even being involved in this for the past couple of years, it's, there's a lot of moving pieces. But if we can understand it, that we can express to the voters that we're confident in the numbers that have been presented to us, then I don't see how we wouldn't be able to gather the support that we need to get it approved.
Yeah, I think, Jean, you said it earlier, I picked up, you said it's, it's not as complicated as I think some people are making it out to be. And if we can see it and articulate it, then we'll, we'll be in good, good shape. So, all right, thank you, Ms. Hickey. Any other questions? All right. Standing reports from our committees? Anything from admin review?
Thursday.
Bylaw? Plymouth Area Collaborative?
We did meet last week and we are still working on the agreement. That's still in review.
All right. Union 31, is this coming next Thursday, right, Jean?
Correct.
All right, thank you. Negotiations? Nothing new. Budget advisory, we've been advised. Facility oversight? We have a capital planning meeting tomorrow. Policy and technology? Thank you, Mike. All right.
Mr. Chet, may I ask one request of Sarah? I guess since we've just seen version two. For the next meeting, since hopefully maybe you might be able to make a motion as we'll know our shared cost numbers by then. Can we have, and I don't want to speak for the whole committee. I just, I like doing it kind of like, let's see it all and then maybe take away what we can't, you know, agree on. But can we see the principal's wish list items included in terms of financials so that we know what percentage increase or what dollar amounts we're looking at increasing before we make a vote?
All right, thank you. Any unfinished business anyone would like to speak to? Noon Business says, this is just more of an update. Thondike Development has terminated its contract to purchase the Sacred Heart School property.
Yeah.
That was very recent, so just thought it would be important to update the committee and anyone listening and watching. Approval of signature bill?
There are payroll cover sheets that are coming around for signature during the meeting. The next vendor warrant is due to the town on February 12th and will go out as a single signature warrant later this week.
All right, thank you. Any other matters or unforeseen at the time of posting? No? All right, before we adjourn, we are going to accept a motion into executive session. But I'm going to have one of the committee members read the exact language for the motion.
I make a motion to adjourn to executive session in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for contract negotiations. KES Principal, Math Interventionist, and School Committee Recording Secretary. An executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law. Approval of executive session minutes, December 4th, 2023, and January 18th, 2024, not to return to open session.
Second?
All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, Mrs. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Chikane?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman?
Yes.
Mrs. Arietta?
Yes.
And Timothy Lewis is a yes. Okay, we are adjourned, thank you.